Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November seventeenth, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, those who are willing and able, I'd like you to please stand and join me in a moment of silence, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have members for public comment tonight, Debra?
We have two for public comment.
Okay.
The first speaker is Monica Delancy.
All right, well, always welcome to see Mr. Delancy, and I believe you by now know the guidelines, so I won't, I won't remind you of them.
Thank you. Good evening. Monica Delancy, Riverside Community. First, I would like to start with thank yous. Thank you to you Cobb County Board of Commissioners for presenting Dr. Billis McClure with the proclamation last month. I failed to thank you last time I was here, so I wanted to thank you again. And also, thank you to Precinct Two Police Department and Fire Station Engine Number One. The next day, they participated with us in a drive-by salute for Dr. Billis. Dr. Billis enjoyed it. She was not expecting all the bells and whistles, but what do you do for someone who served as the principal for 31 years for one school? And we even said, just from communicating with other residents, community members, we're like, that's probably never going to happen again. You may have someone that served 31 years, you know, with the department, education, they matriculate from being a teacher all the way, you know, as a principal, but 31 years as a principal for one school and one community, it's just phenomenal. And she lives in the community, so she is not going anywhere. Her husband said, at the drive-by salute, he said, "We had her for 31 years," so now he gets her. So, right? Okay, so this past Sunday, we Thriving Riverside Rental Association, we hosted a Resource Connection Zoom meeting. Chairman, boards, you participate with us numbers of times. And during the Zoom call, we had almost 50, 50 people on this call. And the concerns that came up was, number one, about the eviction moratorium that will expire December 31st. A couple of residents stated that they actually had writs on them, which is a writ of possession, and the writ of possession was not acted upon because of the moratorium. So they were concerned if they will be set out after December 31st. So, of course, I told them to contact legal aid. I informed them to really discuss some move-out options with, you know, the landlords, and if possible, were they able or not able to get some of the assistance? Well, they did state they did get the assistance, but they exhausted those funds. So then it went on to the next concern with other residents about funds was, would there be more rental assistance in 2021? And also, some of the cases now are not COVID-related. People are being turned down because they don't qualify, because they're not COVID-related, and also they're being turned down because they just, you know, they just can't show how their issue was COVID-related. But they're applying because they do not make enough money to pay rent. They've been trying to keep up with the $1,000 a month rent. Now I'm hearing $1,200 a month, in some areas, $1,500, and their check stubs is only showing, with overtime, less than $2,000. So, from that meeting, and it's going to be continuous meetings, and also, we're going to write, and we're going to ask, will there be, will there be more funding that's given to, for rental assistance outside of the COVID-related challenges? And so, thank you again, on which everybody, Happy Thanksgiving, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Delancy.
The second speaker is Mr. Don Barth.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I got this last-minute phone call tonight because I got stuck in the middle of another situation that we've been in before. We have a development coming that's going to cross your border and Marietta. I live in the city of Marietta, and I try to get them to do the right thing, at least be transparent with it. So, tonight, you're going to vote on Item 12, an intent to object to a annexation that is trying to bring in, let's call it an overdevelopment, an overreach. I am not against annexation, I'm not against development, I'm against bad development. This, again, starts to appear to be too much of a good thing in a small spot. So, with that, I hope that you pay attention to the Nexus Garden Project. What happens to the residents of Cobb County that are left when all that development comes in? One side of the road is Marietta, one side is Cobb County. Nobody's taking a regard towards the county people, much less the city people. Again, we have part on our side, the city side, called Laurel Park. The city's yet to share that with us. I went up today, pulled that out of the zoning meeting. Over the time that I have gotten involved in some of this, we got to work with Mr. Bob Ott on stopping what we called the Stack Ashack, which was located at the corner of Lower Roswell Road. Again, too much of a good thing. Development that you need that many variances to force down somebody's throat? I hope, in the county, that y'all continue to watch the same kind of thing. We need development, but if it doesn't fit, how about, let's leave it alone. So, I want to thank you for your time, and I want you to know that there are a lot of citizens that are together right now, trying to support controlling our future and the land's future around Marietta. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to go to consent next, and for those who are watching at home, Consent Item Number Four has now been moved to, to regular agenda, and we'll hear that after the DOT agenda items. So that, Brad, if you roll through the consent agenda items. Fourteen. Did I say four? I'm sorry, number fourteen. Didn't have, didn't, I didn't even have a tie on. Can't blame that. With that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. Discussion? Here and none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, and next is DOT.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We have four items for consideration. The first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a change order number one final to the contract with Amchev Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $25,514.26 for Big Shanny Road Sidewalks project.
Commissioner Ott, I'm sorry, Burrow, I apologize.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Georgia Bridge and Concrete LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $95,344.35 for bridge replacements on Powers Ferry Drive over Runtland Creek Tributary.
Now, Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Any discussion? Here and none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve an indemnity agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation to obtain an encroachment permit for the I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway.
Commissioner Cupid? I'll second it. Any discussion? Here and none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. And the last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize a fund balance appropriation from the general fund to supplement additional county-wide drainage system improvements in the 2016 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program Fund in an amount not to exceed $3 million. Authorize the addition of projects to the drainage system improvements component, and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved? Second. Any discussion? Here and none? I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. All right, now, next on the finance agenda item that we moved from consent, and Mr. Volpin will lead us in that discussion.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Finance has one item tonight, and this is our first distribution from the Stadium Capital Maintenance Fund. This fund is contributed to by both the Braves and the county at 50% each. County's portion is capped over a 30-year period at $35 million. Again, this is our first distribution, so tonight, we ask the Board of Commissioners to ratify previous action by the county manager, approving the Brave Stadium Company's LLC's request for capital maintenance and repairs. Further authorize payment from the Capital Maintenance Fund for the approved capital maintenance repairs items upon invoices submitted to the county's finance department detailing the work performed. Further authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the clerk to record evidence of such ratification in the official minutes.
So moved? Okay, discussion? Commissioner Cupid, yes?
I'm in support of the items presented. There were 17, except for one item that I will eventually have the clerk make note of. There was one item, when I read it, that just didn't strike me as maintenance, because typically, when you're maintaining something, that means that you're addressing something that's already existing. And this item is to install something which was not existing. And it pertains to the item, I believe it's number fourteen, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve of fourteen, bear with me. Item number twelve, which pertains to fencing, and that's on page 15. This item pertains to fencing, which is initially described as including but not limited to major repair or replacement of security fencing, including steel, aluminum, chain link wood, et cetera, et cetera, within the park and parking lots. When you read further, and they provide further explanation in their exhibits, you learn that this is not a replacement, but installation of a new fence, which was not originally contemplated. And my concern is a slippery slope, that if we start setting a precedent of adding additional items that are not necessarily from maintenance, but of something new, that's more in line of what's considering, considered an improvement, not a maintenance item. And there's a specific section within the operating agreement that distinguishes improvements from maintenance items. And in Section 8.4 of the operating agreement, it does actually make provisions for distinguishing the two. And, which makes me think that they contemplated that even when they drafted the operating agreement. And I'm just going to find this, the sentence, it's a very long sentence, so I'm wondering if I should read the full clause. It's stating, notwithstanding the obligations of the parties to fund capital maintenance and repairs, BSC may in its sole discretion, in reasonable discretion, and at its sole cost and expense, without withdrawal from the Capital Maintenance Fund, or reimbursement or recovery from any county party, and without the need for prior review or approval of the county parties, make or cause to be made improvements and/or capital maintenance and repairs to the stadium, the stadium site, or the authority parking areas that the BSC deems reasonable or necessary or desirable to remain a competitive facility, or to otherwise cause the stadium to be competitive with the offerings of other sports and entertainment venues within the southeast. And, again, when you think of what maintenance is versus an improvement, this seems more of an improvement. And also, with this, while we got the proximate area of where the fence is going to be, the Battery Avenue is a long strip that is incorporated both near the stadium, but also in the Battery. So I had asked our county manager to get a map to delineate where the beginning and the end of this is, because we do not have authorization nor benefit from the Battery. That's really a private entity, so I just wanted that to be made clear, and it has not been by this meeting time. So, should it be the pleasure of this board to move forward with the items suggested by the Braves, including this particular item? I would like for the clerk to note my support for, for their requests, but excluding this particular one, because I didn't, I know there's contractual consideration when somebody has made an action, that a party can reasonably rely on that action, because we've already made it a practice to do something in a particular manner. So while this may be minor in its cost and consideration, what I don't want is for future requests to come to the organizations that are supposed to address maintenance, and there are actually new improvements to the site, that, that we are going to be convinced that we need to cover because we did it in this instance, and therefore should do it in future instances.
Okay. Make sure we put that into the record. Any other comments? Commissioner Burrow?
This fence, is it a security issue for the stadium and the property?
Yes, it is. They, based on the, the last few years, they feel that it's a safety issue. Folks coming from the parking lots and spilling onto Battery Avenue, so they're trying to direct the traffic flow. So it is a safety for the residents and the visitors.
Okay. So, I would consider that. I would consider that to be in line with the agreement, and I support it.
Okay. Any other comments? Here and none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment?
No, no further public comment.
Okay. So, with that, I'd just like to announce the reappointment of Chris Poston to the Kennis Stone Hospital Authority for a five-year term to expire on May 23rd, 2025. And with that, I'm going to start with Commissioner Gambrell. Did I get that right?
You did.
You didn't mean me, right?
No, no, he did say Gambrell. He did get it right, yes. We have a resident, Jimmy Richards, who lives on Acworth due west, and Jimmy is always notifying the county and our DOT crew when we have various things come up that need attention. And the other day, a tree fell across and was partially blocking the rideaway, and Jimmy went out to help get the road open, and before our DOT crew got there. And it turns out that this property is owned by some folks that are in their late 80s, and our Cobb DOT crew, when they found that out, stepped up and actually helped them finish removing the tree. And it was a big appreciation to our community stepping up to help, and then also our DOT crews. So thank you to DOT for going above and beyond the call of duty. And special thanks again to Dallas Kane. Our next one is All Roof Solutions had their winner of their 2020 first responder and veteran roof giveaway. Thank you to everyone who nominated candidates and voted and made this possible. Our winner this year is firefighter Eric Anderson, who has been serving our community as a firefighter since 2003. In 2017, he was diagnosed with stage three colon cancer. Multiple surgeries, chemo, and radiation have kept him out of work for about a year and a half. Our hope is that this gift to Anderson will allow him to have one less thing to worry about as he continues to fight back, to being back out in the community doing what he loves. Congratulations to firefighter Eric Anderson, and thank you for your service. And special thanks to the staff at All Roof Solutions, Inc., and All Restoration Solutions, LLC, for your work in our community. We have a small video we'd like to show.
We're here at our second annual roof giveaway. Last year, we only offered it to veterans, but this year, we decided we wanted to open this up to first responders as well, because first responders this year have been on the front lines for our communities of this pandemic, and we want to take the opportunity to take burden off of them as well. So, Mr. Anderson is a firefighter, and so we're excited to be able to thank him in this way.
My name is Eric Anderson, and I've been with the fire service since 2003, so it makes it like 18 years. I was diagnosed with cancer in 2017. I'm in remission, but this right here is a big help. It takes some, you know, stress off of me, you know, and then I know it's in the, you know, it's a big help.
And I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and remind everybody of how thankful and what we are, how blessed we are in our community for all we have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Okay. On Friday, we had a small ceremony with the family of former chairman Tim Lee to unveil the sign at the Tim D. Lee Senior Center at Sandy Plains and Mountain View Complex. So it was a great tribute. We did everything outside and social distance and wore our masks, except for the picture. And it was great to see his family there in support. The senior center, by the way, is still under some repairs and renovation, and I just want to let everyone know that is so faithful and loyal to this center, that we appreciate your patience, but it, there are some extensive repairs and remodeling that need to be done. So, we appreciate your patience, and hope we'll get back in there in the new year. So, I'm not going to give away the secret for tomorrow, for this week, but we're all looking forward to the ribbon cutting for our new police training center. And, next slide. Our Mandate 54 class will be graduating this week as well. So we look forward to getting in this new, beautiful facility. Last, at our last meeting, you, we honored the National Guard, and this is just a reminder of the red, white, and new event, virtual event, silent auction, that will be going on to help the Georgia National Guard Family Support Foundation. So you can go to the website and bid on, starting November 27th, you can start bidding and purchase your raffle tickets, and, and I hope you will support it. Okay. We have number 173, veteran pet adoption today, and it's a beagle. So, thank you, Mr. Pryor, for adopting this handsome beagle, and for serving 13 years in the Navy. Also, this week, we received a letter of recognition from the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, recognizing the accomplishments and efforts of Keep Cobb Beautiful. And as you know, that Keep Cobb Beautiful walks away with numerous awards at the annual Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation Awards Banquet every year. But I just wanted to read this and congratulate Kimberly Roberts and her staff, and Keep Cobb Beautiful Board and volunteers for all your hard work. The Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, along with its state and national partners, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, and Keep America Beautiful, would like to recognize the exemplary work of Keep Cobb Beautiful in 2019 and 2020. As part of the national movement to improve and beautify communities across America, KCB advocates for cleaner, greener community spaces. In Georgia, it's one of more than 70 local programs that work together to make our state a healthier, more vibrant place to live, culminating in efforts like Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation's Reconsider Litter Campaign. And recent achievements and inroads made by this affiliate include implementing the innovative Hefty Energy Bag Plastics Recovery Program countywide, and expanding it to local cities like Smyrna. KCB was the first KAB affiliate to achieve this grant and help Dow and Reynolds each reach a major milestone by collecting and diverting more than 1 million pounds of hard-to-recycle plastic from landfills in February of 2020. Successfully expanding options for the Hefty Energy Bag Program material collected in Cobb is currently being used to diesel fuel, oil, wax, plastic lumber, and most recently, cinder blocks. Rebranding itself as a leader in virtual environmental educational workshops, offering sessions for seniors, schoolchildren, civic groups, and more, and hosting over 146 sessions total, KCB has reached 96,741 Cobb County residents over the past eight months. Growing participation in its Adopt a Mile program over the past year, expanding membership to local cities, so far, group members have collected over 1,100 bags of litter and adopted over 167 miles of roadsides in Cobb County. As we move into 2021, KCB will, will be of vital importance as it continues to serve its community in new and creative ways. We remain in full support of its work as it persists in making a tangible, meaningful, and lasting impact on its environment. With gratitude, Lindsay Bridges, Board President, Helen Lowman, President and CEO of KAB, and Christopher Nunn, Commissioner of DCA. So congratulations, Kimberly, and all your staff, volunteers, and the Board of Keep Cobb Beautiful. You do great work. 313 Salon on Canton Road, which is also the, the Small Business of the Year Award winner from the Chamber this year. Every year, they host Angels of Life, and, and it's going to be virtual this year, and it's, the money goes for transplants, to the Georgia Transplant Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). So you can visit the website at the bottom of the page and bid on auction items. It started It started last Saturday, the 14th. And last but not least, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Be safe if you're traveling, and as Commissioner Gamble said, we are blessed to live in this great community of Cobb.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you. As so many of you are aware, the number of COVID-positive cases and unfortunately COVID-related deaths continue to increase at this time. So with that, I'd like to let the public know that Wallstar and Public Health are continuing to partner to provide free testing. And the next one that they are working together to provide will be this. Pre-registration is strongly encouraged. However, I do know they can also take people who are able to register on-site. If you have any question about where you may stand when it comes to coronavirus, I encourage you to please get tested and consider this event on Thursday. An upcoming event, which is a continuation of an event from this past Sunday, will be a food giveaway that's being provided by Worship with Wonders Church off of Powder Springs Road. They will be giving out food until they have no food left, and they will start on Sunday, November 22. That's my oldest son's birthday, just noticed that. And that will begin at 3:30 PM. And if you would like to sign up, you can text the word FOODMARKET to 770-691-2885. And if you cannot see the text on your screen, by all means, you can feel free to reach out to our office, and we will help get you connected. You know, we are very grateful to have strong small businesses here in the county, and The Edge Connection is a nonprofit within our county that has been supporting micro businesses within the county for a number of years, and they are partnering with the Small Business Development Center to provide various training programs. And their next program will be this Thursday, November 19, to help small businesses increase their sales, which is always a great thing as we approach Thanksgiving and Black Friday. To register, you can visit theedgegeorgia.org and get more information. The cost of this webinar is free. So again, if you are interested in increasing sales and would like some tips on how to do so for this upcoming year, please consider signing up for this program. Could not leave November without encouraging our citizens to know that we still need you to exercise your right to vote. While the general election, the first Tuesday of November, is typically our big day, we had some big races that will be continuing over as they are in a runoff. Georgia voters will have the opportunity to decide who will be our next U.S. Senators representing the state of Georgia, as well as vote on a public service commissioner. You can register now through December 7 if you are not yet registered to vote, and you can also request an absentee ballot. And for more information about how to do that, you can visit cobelections.org. Advanced voting in the county will begin Monday, December 14, and this is right around the holidays. So as you're out and about in the Christmas spirit, please be in the civic spirit, and don't forget to exercise your right to vote. As was stated here, I pray everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. It is such a unique year for all of us, but considering the impacts of COVID on all of our lives, it truly is a blessing to be alive. And just hope that everyone here can take opportunity to appreciate the gift of life and have a wonderful Thanksgiving. With that, there's one more thing I want to acknowledge as we're giving thanks, but I want to recognize and congratulate the city of Powder Springs, and we'll do more accordingly in December. But this past Friday, the city of Powder Springs won an award through the Atlanta Regional Commission for having a great place in our metro area through the redevelopment of their downtown and some of their historic buildings. So I want to congratulate the mayor and the city council for their vision in improving the city, and know that it's not just a gem for us in Cobb County, but those across the metro region value the work that you have done to rejuvenate your city center. With that, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rod?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I know everyone knows Thanksgiving is coming, and the county offices are closed on Thanksgiving, but they're also closed Friday. So if you have business to do, do it early. And if you're going to travel, travel safely and take care of yourself and your families. Next slide. Okay. So as we approach the end, and for those not keeping track, I have one more meeting after tonight. So the first thing I want to do is I want to, in the spirit of thank you and thanking, I want to thank the folks on the following screens for their time. And we'll let everyone read what these folks have done. Some of these folks have been with me volunteering in these different areas for the entire 12 years. So a lot of these things that you see get done around the county are done with volunteers, citizens like yourselves, that spend time and their talent in helping us. These are my current appointees. There are some, Mike Terry and Andy Smith were both on the Planning Commission, and those of you that are familiar with zoning know that they spend a lot of time watching out for our communities. You know, we heard the conversation about the annexation coming up. So I just want to thank each one of them for all their time and efforts to make District Two a great place. Next slide. Coming tomorrow, actually, it's been the entire week, but tomorrow is officially GIS Day, so you can join, and you can see the website there. I'm actually going to be participating tomorrow, but if you want to learn more about GIS, what it does for you, all the really cool things that are out there, check it out. Now, before we go to the next slide, it's a better day. Better ingredients make better pizza. And today, next slide, today it was announced that Papa John's feels that Cobb County has better ingredients. And you can see here the article from the MDJ. Today, it was announced that Papa John's will be moving their national headquarters to the Battery, the building being built right next to the Tissin Crupp Elevator Tower. You can see it in the picture here. It's bringing over 160 jobs in the $100,000, $120,000 range, so it's a great catch for Cobb and for the state of Georgia. So get ready for your pizzas. Next slide. Next week, there will not be a District Two newsletter. I know you're all waiting in anticipation for what comes out every week, but you're going to have to take a week off. Last slide. Now, my final thanks that I want to do, and you know, we say it every so often at the meetings, but my thanks goes out to staff. During my 12 years up here, everything that we do as a board or that we've accomplished in District Two doesn't get done without staff. You know, we sit up here, and we have all these great ideas, and we tell the community what we're going to do. We have our town halls, which don't happen without staff, setting them up, making them happen, giving us the information. So to all of you out there in the audience, the staff, thank you. Thank you for making me look good. Thank you for making District Two a great place, and just keep doing what you're doing. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And before I close out, I just want to remind everybody that we're still in the middle of this pandemic. I want to join Dr. Memark and all healthcare professionals in this county throughout the nation to ensure that during this time, you take the necessary precautions. And I emphasize the three W's: watch your distance, wear a mask, and wash your hands. If you take those three precautions, you have a great chance of not catching this virus. It's on the rise, and as we spend more time indoors, the chances of catching it increase. So I just want you to think about your actions during the next couple of weeks. Kids are coming back from school, you're gathering for families, and I certainly want to encourage that. Lord knows that we need to have family and friends during this time. But I think we should also know that we need to act responsibly in this time, and I'm asking for you to join me in that, along with observing all those heroic efforts on the part of our safety and healthcare workers, who are going to have to take care of you if you, you know, catch it seriously enough, or you have to go in the hospital. As we said back in March, the big issue here is making sure we have enough beds in the hospitals to take care of you if you catch the virus to the point where you have to be medically addressed. And Lord knows I don't want that to happen to anybody. So please, please, take all necessary precautions. On that, I want to end the note on a positive comment. I want to join all the commissioners wishing everyone here a really, really wonderful, happy Thanksgiving. We are so blessed to live in the greatest country on this earth and out in the history of mankind, and I feel honored to be part of this community called Cobb. So with that, we're adjourned.